Well, welcome, everyone. We're glad that we have good attendance tonight and you can see what the board is doing in their work session and I'll listen to the presentation on the boundary options. So, welcome. And because we have so many people here, I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves, starting with you.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I'm Terri Stahl and proud superintendent of the Savagery Schools.
And I'm Leigh Schimmick, school board chair.
Melissa Inger, board director.
Stacy Rawl, vice chair.
Mary France, board director.
Jim Dowell, director of operations and transportation.
I'm Maury Mullin, assistant director of operations and transportation.
Michael Nelson, board director.
Maria Malaski, board director.
Jonathan Drews, board director. Chair Schimmick, I think you're mistaken. These folks are all here to hear Julie's budget presentation.
And I'm Julie Safe, executive director of human resources.
Jim Quorum, executive director of human resources.
Jeff Holmberg, assistant superintendent.
And Dennis Cheeseborough with Teamworks International.
Okay, thank you. First on our agenda is our district governance and policy section. This is where we review our monthly agenda. And briefly, tonight, we're talking a lot about self-governance and public engagement. And involved in that is the boundary process that we're going through right now. And this past week, most of the board members had the opportunity to get more detailed information on the boundaries by coming in for an extra session to learn more detail about the options. So with that, we'll move on to oversight of operations. What, Jeff? I think, Dennis?
I'm starting it.
You are.
Yeah, so thank you all for being here this evening. I think Martha, I should be good to run this, right? Excellent.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for everyone being here. We knew that when the community passed the referendum for us to build a new school, that changing boundaries was going to be one of the things with the elementaries that we had to look at. So we began that process as early as possible so that those decisions could be made. Tonight, board members will review and discuss the elementary attendance boundary recommendations. The other things that will be happening tonight that aren't in the scope of that work, but certainly are parts of the process of boundaries and decisions that we'll be making down the road include things like open enrollment processes, in-district transfer, transition of how students and staff will move from one building to the other, also taking a look at students who receive special education services and how some of those things will happen. School start times are another thing. So those are all within the scope of the work that we have yet to do, but not for tonight. So I'll touch on a few of those really, really briefly, but mostly tonight it really is just the scope of our work this evening is the boundaries. We're here because of our enrollment growth, and this is a slide that you have seen, and we're really excited about a new elementary school and the space that we're adding to many other elementary schools that will help us go into work with our growing population of students. Managing student growth is something that we've done a lot here, and we've done that in a lot of different ways, both, I think, the managing of the growth as well as managing excellence. And we do that through adding space as we've needed it. We've been fortunate that our community has provided opportunities for that. We add programs as we need to. We've done soft boundary changes as we've needed to over the years, and we've done some larger boundary changes. So this is just meant to be opportunity for you to see how we manage growth and manage excellence on Boyer and the school district. Again, Hamilton Ridge will be opening in 2020, so prepare for that. To utilize capacity in all of our buildings of where the capacity will be at that time, we're looking at the attendance boundaries. Just a couple reminders, reminding the board and our public who's here this evening, that 2020 La Ola de Lago, our Spanish immersion program, will next year be a K-5 program. And in 2020, we'll move that program to Greenwood Elementary. In addition, Edgewood School, which currently houses La Ola de Lago, will house, continue to house our preschool programming, early childhood family education, early childhood special education, and some of our early childhood screening. This document is, board members, you've seen this before, you approved this. This really laid out the process for us. Why we needed to do this process, the why was, we need to take a look at boundary changes and capacity in each building to ensure that we're ready for the opening of the building in 2020. The what is, the board called out what we needed to do, and that is really looking at the capacity across the district, looking at where programming will be, looking at busing and transportation through all of them as well. And then the unacceptable means is what do we want to make sure that we don't do during this process? And we want to make sure, obviously, that we don't violate any of our policies or laws, that we continue the programming that we have in our district, and that we don't create unreasonable inequities in our buildings through this process. We have been working with Dennis Cheeseborough and Teamworks International. I'll just let you briefly go through again for our attendance here in this process.
So in this process of decision-making, what was set out really early is both roles, responsibilities, structure, and process. So the roles and responsibility, the superintendent and the school board are in the, have the responsibility of choice-making, of making the final choices and decisions for different levels in terms of for management and for governance and long-range planning. To help provide the choice-makers good options, the guiding change document was framing the parameters so that there was a consistent and clear understanding of parameters for the design team. And the design team was, responsibility was largely to look at research and create options, number one. Number two, to be part of engaging an input team with representatives from all the schools as well as public meeting, to listen to the responses and create a feedback loop so that responses, ideas, and input would inform the options being created by the design team. In fact, if you've been watching the process, the design has changed, the options have changed a number of times, both from public meeting and from input team meetings. And that ended up resulting, over the past few months, of coming up with two options that is, that are seen from the design team's perspective as meeting the guiding change document and positions the superintendent and the board to say yes to either one. It's just a matter of what you, the board and the superintendent would like to do. I'm also going to encourage everybody to understand, the process doesn't end when you make a choice. You then move to implementation, and as the superintendent said, when you move to implementation, then the finalization of open enrollment, inter-district transfer, the final start time, all of that gets, after choice, gets designed as part of implementation, and then refinement as you go along.
Makes sense.
Yep.
The next slide just shows again that we worked with both staff and parent stakeholders to ensure that we had wide representation from all of our buildings and attendance boundaries as part of this process. In addition, on the input team, we had representatives from both of our cities, Savage and Prior Lake, as well as leaders from our other partners in our school district, transportation, kids company, just to ensure that we had multiple perspectives at the table in order to help us make the best decisions or options forward for board consideration. This is just, again, you saw this when it was empty, when it was just here, the dates, here's the process. And while the official meeting started January 8th, we certainly had months of preparation before that in terms of getting a team together and beginning to look at the data. So this just helps outline the work that came to the design team, as Dennis just described, back out to the input team, and how that was used, that input was used throughout the process to make changes. And we are here tonight on April 22nd.
So taking a look at some of the research, just, and again, this was presented at the public meeting, I think most have been involved in the process. We've been using census demographics, your actual resident births within your, within the census blocks, within your district, your current housing analysis, sales redevelopment, looking at future housing analysis. And you'll see on the maps, we've mapped where current active approved developments are, both for single-family homes and townhomes, condos, apartments, as well as some areas of interest. We've been utilizing resident-student as the base analysis for capacity and design, as well as, as we look at different options, we've also been doing social economics to see how that would impact if students today were organized in this way, what would the schools look like? We're looking at historical enrollment trends, projected enrollment trends. We look at market share analysis, which means of-school age children in all these different areas, how many are choosing your school district versus other options, because the enrollment share does impact a market share. And then also is, each of the designs was assessed, or the capacity of the schools was designed around your educational design. And so your educational design, your preferred educational use of spaces is almost always less than how many kids can we possibly get in a school. You don't want to design for that. You want to design for your educational design and use of spaces in classrooms. So we take all of that. That has been in place through the design team and some level at the input team all along this process.
Jeff, it must be user error. Thanks.
Yep, no problem.
And so a couple of key things. We researched with the foundational learning, all the things in the previous slide, just to make everyone go back over, is that when we did modeling, we did modeling with resident students only, okay? Which was, we find to be the most, quite the most accurate and valuable way of doing this. In-district transfer students were placed in option attendance areas where they live. We understand that inter-district transfers will occur, but you can't model that. Greenwood was filled with current students to nine, and random students to 95% of design capacity. And just so that you know, if we, how did you fill that to 95%? We looked for the concentration of students were, and we pulled an equal percentage out of remaining areas based upon the density or concentration of students across the district. We used the academic design. There was a goal of five-plus years of attendance boundaries. When a district is growing, many people believe that, or hope that, boundaries will never change. We typically tell districts that are changing, you should assume boundary changes every three years if you're growing. And what we did for this process is set out a goal, is it possible to have a distribution of this that would give you a modeling of five-plus years? And there's an assumption that you'll manage open enrollment into the future as you need it.
Excellent. And then just reiterating what I said earlier about being out of the scope of tonight's meeting, but certainly considerations and work that we'll be doing is for next year, for the 2019, 2020 school year, our in-district, in-district transfer protocols will stay unchanged. They'll stay as they currently are, and we're communicating that to families. And then after we make decisions about the boundaries, we'll see what the impact is and what decisions we'll make with that. In the same way, we'll do the same thing with open enrollment. After we, our resident students are placed, our in-district transfer students are placed, then we'll take a look to see where we'll place open enrollment students as well. And we'll continue to monitor that very closely. And then lastly, we'll maintain similar start times at the elementary schools, but right now, that decision hasn't been made. Who will be the earlier start or the later start? Again, that'll be work that we have to do as we move forward.
And the options require additional buses, but what was assessed during the process was, were any one option having different, sort of widely different operating costs than the others? And both of the options looking at tonight have very similar costs to implement for busing and for start times. And so here is your current attendance, using, here's your current design using pre-construction numbers. You'll make note of the underline there. So based upon where you are today and the current boundaries. We then go to, when we talked about instructional design, this was the post-construction, so after construction, what was the design of use for, use of spaces in each of the buildings? And what's the resultant capacity that was used? When we talk about percent filled, it's based upon that number on the far right-hand column. We're looking at two options, which are labeled B1 and C1. I'll just call your attention to, on the slide that shows the schedule of meetings, you may, you may or may not be aware, there was originally an A and a B, then there was an A1 and a B1. Then B1 was changed again, then there was a C2, a C1, a C2, a C3, a C4. And then some of that was, again, refined a little bit. So there's been about six or seven options that have gone through, generate change. As it is, is option B1 and C1. I'm just going to make this comment, just to kind of, it's a nice, maybe one way of looking at it. The main differences between the C1 and the B1 is the attendance boundaries for Westwood and Jeffers Pond. The other boundaries actually are the same in each of the options. So what ended up through this process is what I would say, very similar boundaries for the majority of the schools, understanding that Greenwood is the entire district. And the change ended up being the change in this area between these two boundaries. So you, we take a look at B1, what is, using post-construction capacity. And when we look at these enrollment numbers, one way of understanding, when you look at these maps, it includes your current students, the estimated birth rate increase, and the progression of children who've been born into your system. It also estimates the completion of planned and active developments, but it does not include things that are not approved. So if people in the community said, I heard that in a couple of years, we're going to do X, Y, Z, if it's not approved, it's not been factored in. So when we take a look at all of those factors, we projected based upon the boundaries, what would the, what would the projections be for the different schools? And the key factor here that you're looking for is a relative sense of not filling to 110-plus percent. And so as we look at this, the statement a design team might make is that there is, each of the boundaries is able to absorb projected active developments, number one, increase based upon demographics, number two, within the market share that you have. And you have space for growth and open enrollment throughout the district. So you have space for inter-district transfers, you have space for open enrollment, and it should be something that you can manage. From an outside perspective, this is, and I'll just say this, and I said this, I think, when we met with some of the board members, it actually is somewhat unusual for us to look across multiple elementary schools over five years and sitting here in a fairly balanced structure across the district. Usually, we usually have a couple of schools that are just after five years development. So what it does say is that the community, the board, the district, the board's community decision to build Hamilton Ridge actually has placed you in a, in a position of stability even with a lot of growth. So if we take a look, that's your present capacity utilization. And then what we did, and I'm not going to read this all to you, but then what we did, if someone said, where did those numbers come from? We projected out each school, each grade. So you could see the projections for each school, each grade, out through 23, 24, from which the numbers are derived from. And obviously, reality out over the next five years will be impacted by your managing of open enrollment. What are your protocol for in-district transfer, right? And quite honestly, the other factor that can change is your market share can go up, and you still have capacity for that. So we'll go through, because a board, this isn't a board book, you've looked at these numbers, they're projections. Then we talk about socioeconomics. We said, if current students were residing in this structure, right? What would their resultant be for the number of students, for race, ethnicity, free and reduced lunch, special education, and average median household income? And so this gives you a way of looking at what that might be. And for average median household income, just so you know, the smallest geographic area you can deal with is a census block. You cannot get individual income. So we, where students live, we assign them the median of the census block, and then we say, what is average of the medians that are in that, those boundary areas? Because I think the question has come up, where there's development, how do you know what the median income is? You don't. It's the current. All we can do is say, in the current median income, here's the distribution. If I have a development opening up, based upon the value of the homes, that median income could go up or down four, five years from now. Okay? So the socioeconomic is a projection of current students and current housing stock and household income data placed in the boundary design. Option B1, then we have a map, which is what is on the walls, in which we've placed the different developments. Again, it gives you a representation of number and size. Blue is single-family homes, green is townhomes and duplexes. And areas of future interest or development beyond what you, what's plotted and approved, we try to indicate areas that came up during the input team and the design team meeting. So both input team and design team members said, we've been talking about these areas of interest. Why don't we indicate the areas that we were just talking about? So that's what we placed on the maps. Again, you'll see option C1, which is now the second option. Again, the difference is in this area here about how you structure the boundaries. When we look at this, you can see the resultant estimations, much like, much like B1. And it was to try to get, we, just so everybody knows, the design team wasn't trying to get, like, let's get as close as we, we weren't playing games to get close. We just said, if we drew boundaries this way, how would it end up? And this is how it ended up. And again, there are different enrollment projections for each of the schools, at each of the grades, going out into the future. And they are, they are projections, and again, the socioeconomic. And then what we did is have another map so that you can see what developments fall in, fall into these proposed boundaries so that you can have a clear picture.
I think this just speaks to the process that Dennis talked about at the beginning, that the process worked, right? Through it, through the process of the input from folks along the way, stakeholders along the way, we made adjustments, made changes. And actually, especially at the last input team meeting, the design team had brought forward and asked the input team to take a look at C3 and B1 against the guiding change document. And as the input team was working on that, they kept coming back and saying, you know, some of the concerns that we have in option C3 is eliminated with C1. So they, it's like, can we take a look at this and reassess this against the guiding change document, which really helped us with the recommendations that are coming forward tonight. Is this the guiding change document again?
And then, so what we did is created a chart so that you can see, well, how does B1 and C1 compare looking out over time? Because I can't remember the two charts together. So we put them together and say, here's the percentages of the two different designs out over time. And they're very much going to be the same.
I think, go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead.
Yep, and then on the next one, on the timeline, I think, board members, this is the initial timeline that we had set and planned from the very beginning. I know you've added a study session before the board meeting on May 6th. At that point, you'll determine if you're ready to take action at that May 6th meeting or not. So just wanted to be sure folks were aware of that, but big wise to have as much opportunity to discuss it as possible. And with that, I think we...
We can go backward and forward.
Yep.
As you know, part of the work session is to have discussion among, among board members with administrators. The objective of any, any work session is for board members to hopefully walk away believing that you are informed, that you understand, and that you may be ready, or you're ready or you're not for a May 6th decision, as well as I believe that there's a possibility that you might have members of the community that may speak with you later on tonight to also help inform your deliberations and your understandings. So questions or clarification from board members based upon what's been in the presentation, which I know you have reviewed?
I just had a couple of questions. So I just wanted to clarify, so the purple circles, those are areas of future interest and aren't in any type of...
There's no projections, because there's no, activity could begin, it could begin within the next year. We are just trying to say is that the design team and the input team were both aware that approved developments as of today is not the end of development.
And so on the approves, with the little blue right there?
The blue and the green are the ones that are approved and active.
And the assumption is that within five years?
They will be complete.
The complete, okay. And then I just had a question like on travel time. How did we, like, look at that, assess that with the different options? What was the process for that?
We have a question from a board member, specifically, what's the longest time at Red Tail Ridge? It's 30 minutes.
Currently?
Currently.
Current?
This is current, yep. Hamilton will be 20 to 25 minutes. Fly Fox is, longest is 30 minutes. If you look at the map, you can see in both proposals, Red Tail Ridge is a large geographical area, as is Fly Fox. And so that's where the time comes in. Not a lot of students way out, but we still have to service them.
And how much does, you know, time of day, traffic patterns, our start times? I mean, I'm just thinking, if we have to travel through, you know, the middle of Prior Lake, which is not ideal, what, what, you know, is that, does that affect us? I mean, like, right now, like, with our times of our enrollment?
Well, we would adjust our routes to make any, I mean, if there was construction, for example, we adjust our routes to make that work, and so we might move up times a little bit. But based on current reality, those are the times, about 30 minutes. And there was another question. So proportion of students with 10-minute rides proposed is 70%. We don't have a lot along the bus rides. You know, the rural areas, yes, but if you look at Glendale, for example, it's a pretty dense area, so we get kids on and off pretty quickly. Thanks for that.
No questions?
Jim, thanks for that clarification. Can you give us more clarification on the difference in bus time for the B1 and C1 in that area that's Jeffers Pond, the B1?
So from B1 to C1?
Right.
The major change would be the westward times.
This one right up here, this whole area here, looks like it's changed quite a bit from there.
You can hear the back there. Sure. You can hear back here as well?
Sure. My question was, the difference in bus time, this neighborhood area right in here, that's different from here than it is from right here.
Right.
I know that there were some kids back before we built Jeffers Pond that were on the bus for 50 minutes going to Westwood. They were in this area. So that's something that we want to avoid.
Correct. And there's not a huge difference between them in transportation-wise. I mean, the times may vary a little bit, and we can do better work once we have the plan that we're going with. In general, our routes are less than 30 minutes. The longest routes are Red Tail Ridge and in both models, Fly Fox and Red Tail Ridge, because of the rural roads we have to go. We cover 45 square miles in the district, and if you look at the map, probably about a third of it, or almost half, is those two schools, geographically. Again, it's important to remember that not every school is assigned their school buses. So we start with the amount of buses for middle schools, then we roll into high school and Pearlfield schools. Then we roll into high school and Pearlfield Schools. Then we spill into the elementaries. So that's, if we had buses for every school, it would be a lot easier. But we don't. So there's a lot to consider as we develop routes.
And then, another question. Here's at what point, and maybe Dennis can answer this one. At what point did we bring into the conversation the topic of socioeconomic? Was that right from the get-go?
From the get-go. When we work with districts, socioeconomic analysis is baseline. We always do that. So that, we always do socioeconomic.
Okay.
And I think part of that.
So I was going to say, I thought that our premise was always neighborhood schools. Regardless, I mean, we're educating a child, no matter what their socioeconomic background, what their race, having that neighborhood school is the priority for the family, for a district.
And in the guiding change, exactly right. And that's why, because of our value that this district places on neighborhood schools, we're never going to have a balance in all of those areas that you saw. Our goal was to look at ensuring through the guiding change document that we weren't creating unrealistic inequities in any of the buildings. And we don't believe that we've done that.
So I just wanted to make sure that option B one, that we're not pulling in homes just because of the value of the homes into the westward.
It was, the designs were, the driver for the design is capacity. We do socioeconomic analysis so that the district has a view because if you don't do it, it's the first question that comes up. If you organize this way, what sort of student populations might you project the school? So we just always do it because the data's there. But it wasn't a primary driver. Primary driver was after academic design was set, was about capacity over time.
Jonathan?
So Dennis, could you just maybe elaborate on what you just said? If we think about the priorities and what our objectives were from the outset? We talk about neighborhood schools. We talk about efficient use of all of our spaces, of equalling out or evening out our demographics. How did, and having a five-year or a longer-term solution? Can we rank kind of how the input team placed those priorities in terms of what their top ones were?
Utilization over time was probably the number one thing that was talked about. The socioeconomic analysis, quite honestly, was to answer the unacceptable need in the guiding change document that you don't create inequities. Well, the question is, how do you know? Do the analysis afterward. Right, so, so the driver was, once the academic design was set and the use of classrooms, it was, it really was percent capacity over time. And with the caveat that it was like the second level check that wouldn't create inequities or beyond what you have today or known inequities beyond the schools that you can't, that you maybe had some ability to influence. But that wasn't the main driver. The main driver was capacity. Quite honestly, and we had lots of talks about transportation as we went along, as we took a look at that. So those are the main drivers. Thank you.
Any other questions? Michael?
Jim and Marie, I'm just following up on the bus time issue and a little bit on Melissa's question. In both scenarios, are you comfortable with how people's bus travel times may change? It's one of the highest, you know, points of input we're getting from the community on both sides. Obviously, at some point, we're going to have bus changes for folks or we're not going to be able to change our boundaries. But are you comfortable in both scenarios from how it will come together and how those bus times will play out in either scenario?
We are confident we can make any of those plans work. Reasonable bus routes for children. If that happens to be then, we have to add a bus down the road to make times work. We do that every single year. So we're flexible in that, but transportation can live with either one of the plans.
And do you anticipate any, anything longer than, say, those red tail routes? Or in either of these plans for the neighborhoods moving? In other words, if some kids, rural areas are busing already at 30 minutes?
Right, there should be no major changes to the longest of our routes.
Yeah, so we won't be going, there's no 45-minute bus rides.
Should not be.
Well, there will be, though, changes to individual families.
To families, yes. I just mean, while districts suddenly have, you know, 45 and 160-minute bus rides going on with these changes. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And that would be something, you know, I think, as you saw the, you know, through the implementation process, you know, that's something that a transportation company does every single fall. They get phone calls, you know, at the beginning of the year that, you know, this ride time is long or something like that. We make adjustments. And sometimes change routes, or sometimes it's just once routines happen, the time has lessened a bit. But that's ongoing work that we'll do to make sure that if we, a route is longer than what we wanted, we will come back to the board to request additional busing and alleviate that.
May I just follow?
I just want to make a comment, too. I do want to remind everybody that we had community members giving us input. And I want to say thank you for everybody who has spent time and represented all of the families and people without children in the district to bring us a recommendation. We didn't sit down as a board and make these recommendations. So I want the community to know how grateful we are for the time that went in and for the design team that put it in. And just for our sake, as a board too, to give us some context. This is a very emotional, stressful issue. I'm also following some other districts that are looking to cut millions of dollars out of their schools right now. They're shutting buildings. The school district guy grew up in has to choose between counselors and choir, for example. So I just want to take a step back to as a board and say, this is really, really hard stuff. But we're growing, and that's the upside.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just want to ask that, as we go into whichever option is chosen, that we actually do honor what the community wants and needs also, and actually analyze those bus routes. And so we, as a board, can see them. Simply because, obviously, we do have to make those decisions. And I think it's really important that we bring that to light, to not just hear when we need another bus. We actually have a chance to review the bus routes.
I just had a little, another background thing I just wanted to confirm. All of our, we've been projecting our growth for years, of course, and based the referendum on it. If we added up the numbers that we are looking at in each of those schools for 2023, are those going to add up to sort of the same numbers that we? Do the numbers jive? Just is what I'm wondering. If we add up the individual schools to sort of what we projected as a total at the elementary level for in-district students? Did we, do we know those numbers all drive? Are we using the same ones?
We've been using the same numbers, yes. Yeah, it just, you just have to understand that the numbers you see on these charts do not include open enrollment.
Yeah, correct.
Just, which I.
In-district.
Surely that's, what, 300, 250?
The delta is, but it's 1,000 students across the district.
Right, but the change, right? And so I think that, so if you look, so if you look at numbers just broadly, you just have to understand that numbers I may look at today in past reports and other ways would always have open enrollment in it. And for this purpose, as we specifically felt most comfortable keeping them out. Because from a design team perspective, it was a lot cleaner just to look at in-district students. And gives you a more of a, what do we have to manage going forward? What degree of, how space do we have to manage going forward?
And are, secondly, are our capacities on all of the buildings are based on our established target class sizes?
And we went, that analysis went on in the very first part of this when the design team was first meeting. We went back and forth about setting the academic design and the capacities that went with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Melissa?
Couple of different things. I've heard this term thrown out a few times. First part, the second part is for you, Dennis. But I've heard the term that it's an emotional decision. I would push back on that, that this is clearly not an emotional decision. It's a logic decision. And the priority matrix should be best interest of the student always. But number one, current residents, students. Number two, current open-enrolled students. Then we go to future developing neighborhoods and future open enrollment. I guess, walk us through again, why we're not including open enrollment in these figures? That should be, we should tip it the other way. And that when those students should be very first to be asked to change schools, not our resident students. Again, I have a disconnect with that, and that's what I'm hearing in the community. So help us through that.
Because what, when you're looking at, when you're, so when you take a look at current open-enrolled students and you look at that over a five-year time, right? We typically, when you look out, you have to, when you say, number one is our current student body. From a projection point of view, all of your developments are your, in the future, is your current students. So developments end up being, if you want to, if you want to go through your logic model, is level one. And we use that for the modeling because most districts in development, where you're trying to manage the cost of investment, the investment into your buildings and the capacity that you have, most districts look out as future in-district enrollment as student count, even if it's not yet realized, so that you manage your open enrollment up and down.
Well, we can assign those neighborhoods, with the builders, we can assign that that goes to whatever school. But, you know, we've got 1,000 open-enrolled students. Those are the first ones that we should be able to say, this is where we have open seats. We have open seats at Westwood, for instance. And they should be going there first.
And that is the protocol that you will work out.
Right, but we're not using it for this particular project with this matrix.
Actually, we are. So if we, if we think about the, if we think about the reason it's so important to have just the data around resident students, we can at any time, and we do, use open enrollment to manage where the space is. So to your first question or your first comment, if through this process, there is room, and again, these are some of the questions that we don't know yet. Will fifth graders be able to be grandfathered in? I don't know that. Will in-district transferred kids be able to stay at the school they're at? I don't know, we have to look at the numbers. Will open enrolled students be able to stay at the school they're at right now? Don't know. Those are some of the factors that we're going to be able to do to balance out the percentages. The most important charge that the input team and design team have for this process is, can we manage resident growth for five to six years? And that's why we've maintained this model with the resident growth piece, and we can manage the rest of it as we go through. And then we'll have to look at some of those other transitional decisions about what are we able to do to impact movement as least as we possibly can.
And I'd like to make a comment. It is an emotional decision. Now, when we're asking people to take their kids out of one school, move it into another, sometimes in very transitional areas of their development. And so you have the transition issue, which is huge. And it's more emotional, I think, than anything else. And then you've got the long term, when you've got drive time for parents, you've got proximity to neighborhoods, and obviously bus times, et cetera, combined with the growth. So you've got your long term, where we want to do whatever we can, if we can, to not change boundaries again. And then we've got the short term, particularly for the younger kids, of when they've already got established teachers, friends, et cetera. And then you've got to rip them out. That's huge for kids, and it's emotional for them more than it is logical because I don't think they see the difference. So with that, I'd really like to look at, from a transportation, from a growth area and everything else, the pros and cons of the two options in front of us. And talk about exactly why we have these two options and why each of them were chosen from a growth standpoint, from a transition standpoint, too. And I know that the team did a lot of work into this, and they do have pros and cons for each one, as well as risks based upon growth in each of these areas. And I was wondering if somebody could share the thought process. I wasn't in the actual meetings, and I'd like to understand the thought process behind of how we got to these final two options.
We can, so if I just went, like, the pros that were on both options is stability over time. They operated within, they're able to do that within the academic design. And there was open enrollment room, inter-district transfer room, across the district. There wasn't one side of the district closed to open enrollment, another side open, it was open across. So that was the big, consistent positives for each. The negatives, and also when we took a look at the transportation, was not demonstrably different for each one. Realized, and I hope the board realizes, when the board, when you make the change to add the elementary school and to have a district-wide school, that creates change. So there's going to be change, there is change. And it's across the entire district. The biggest difference, if you want to put up a map, can you go backwards? So, yeah, if you just, the one before this and this, go, keep going back because they're right, they're back to back. And the next one, back, see, they're back to back. The biggest difference between the two in this is that, is with pros and cons. Pros, it takes development at an area of interest and brings it to Westwood, not to Jeffers Pond. The con is, it is a, it's a longer, it's a longer drive here from here to here. And it's, it's, there's developments here that are near. So there's developments here that are going to be upset, right? Because I'm closer, right? And then if you go to the next one, what happens is that, again, you have the same pros, the cons shift. People here are going to say, oh, we've got, that's great. The con is that you now have a lot of development going into Jeffers Pond, right? And so it appears that, it appears that, and remember, when we looked at the numbers, those numbers are only for, are only for no one development. So what happened was, in the previous example, go back one. The area of interest here was going into a building that had the lower, or more open capacity, not to Jeffers Pond. You go to the negative, go forward. It now brings that in. The other positive, go back, is that, which we heard, was that this is an easier, this is like a drive going this way for people here, right? Well, it's a negative for the people in this side of the line, if you go forward. Now you have people here that are, actually, the boundaries here are very similar to your current boundaries. And now you have people here that are going this way. And so that's a little, it's a more difficult. If I'm driving from a transportation, like you said, the transportation times are similar, right? But it's a long, thin design. And so what you end up with is, there's positives, there's a positives across both. The positives and the negatives ends up being with this area here driving in this as a negative. And then, and the negative here is you're putting a lot of development into Jeffers Pond, and you flip that, you get a balancing of the, of the development into the future, longer in the future. But then you have a neighborhood that says, we're very close. So what we, it's good, I think it's good news from a balance across all. It's, if you said it's an emotional decision, emotional, there's emotional negatives on both options. And just so everybody knows, there was emotional decisions on every option. And so we looked through them, and we went with what we thought was the most stable design over time. But these both have losses and minuses with regards to transportation, change, and ability to absorb capacity in the future. However, it looks like they still have, you should have a five-year growth. If any one of these areas of interest starts a large-scale development, then you'll have to take a look at it, but you'll manage that probably through open enrollment. I don't know if that helps?
Well, it helps explain the logic between the two because, you know, the primary areas that you touched on were the ones most drastically changed. I do want to ask Jim about, and obviously, inclement weather is not the status quo here, although.
Except this year. Except this year.
Well, last year wasn't that great either. Let's talk about the drive time, particularly.
Let's talk about the drive time, particularly through that area for both Five Hogs as well as the area on C1 and the area from, from the far left all the way up through that skinny area. It would be nice if we could just fill in the lake and make them more square, but we can't do that, so. Because we do have the crossover both ways, somebody's got a crossover lake in those two areas. Are there bottlenecks there? Are there issues?
Yes, I mean, traffic is a consideration, not only on the roads, but at school sites. We have a lot of traffic everywhere and it's something we can't avoid. So we try to design the routes as efficiently as possible and we make adjustments on the route times or pickup times based on how it works. You'll know, if you'll remember, the first couple of weeks of school, we have, we have buses standing by everywhere to help with overloads and if there are problems because it's new. Our routes are different every single year. We don't set routes for a boundary and that's it. We, every year, as we see enrollment and where those are, we readjust our bus routes to keep the buses as efficient as possible.
Okay, so let me, let me ask this another way, too. So if we look just, and I wanna compare, I wanna take the same thing and compare it against option B here. We're also looking at extracurricular activities, parents driving back and forth and, and all that. And the, and the congestion, particularly in the morning. Not necessarily in the afternoon, in the afternoon you're not meeting rush hour, which helps. But in the morning, when you have, obviously, from these areas, they're, they're all using those pathways across the lake. They have to, for many people, okay? So when you take into that consideration and the ability for parents to come and get their kids for extracurriculars or have to drop them off for certain activities in the morning, et cetera, is there any particular concern that you have in, in the two options, one that's better or worse?
No, I, I think for transportation, they both are, are work. The, the important thing to remember is that elementary start later, nine, nine, nine o'clock, let's say, for the latest ones. And the more rural ones, we start earlier because they don't, they're not as impacted by traffic as much as the, you know, the, the smaller neighborhood schools.
Dennis has to leave here a couple of minutes. Are there any questions directly now? Okay, quick questions directed for Dennis?
We just look at the other option, too, just to compare it as we're talking because we see that long, skinny. But now what we, what it looks like to me is we basically replaced that one long path up to, up along one side of the lake where, where Jeffers Pond's boundary is and we simply just moved it and made more Jeffers Ponds absorb that piece. Is that correct? Except they don't have to cross the lake. Well, I'm talking about the difference.
Oh, yeah.
You have, you have everything on one side of the lake and the other one you don't. You have gotta cross the lake.
Not quite everything.
No.
Not quite everything.
The north of it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, I gotta, Florida Plain, that's eight, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or did you have something to finish?
Well, I could add a little bit, so Jeff, if you go back to V1.
Yep.
So Mary, V1, what we, what we propose is that we use Highway, State Highway 21 as the boundary. That's where that line is that pulls up. And so in option C1, in order not to divide the neighborhood, we just won't go down to, I'm not sure what, is it Cassandra or it?
Yeah.
So different, you know, it's different.
Because I'll just say it aloud, I'm not, since there isn't that difference, then I would prefer to keep C1 the way it is because it, it tends to keep more neighborhoods together and more areas together as they were natively before, as long as that transportation issue isn't going to literally be a stumper in the, in the future.
Yeah, I mean, transportation will not, is not gonna be an issue going these times. I mean, we're, we're pretty adept at making adjustments and looking at the most efficient routing and keep the tight.
Is there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to, Mary talked a little bit about transition for families and I just, I wanna be sure all the parents hear this and, and I do understand, we do understand that, that this has changed and change is, is hard. I want you to know that, first of all, one thing that we haven't talked about at all yet and there'll be a process this fall, is staff will also be changing. So sometimes we wanna be in a building because our favorite teachers are there and they may or may not be there. And I also just wanna assure you, not that it's gonna minimize your stress at all, but we will have, at every building, we'll set up something next spring so that students have a chance to go to that new school, parents have some kind of a chance to do that. So again, I, I know that doesn't necessarily help right now, but I want you to know that we've done that in the past, we'll continue to do that to make the transition as, as easy as they can be.
Okay, next steps. First, I wanna thank the input and design teams for the hours that they put in, all the study time and the discussions that they've had. I'm guessing they were fairly lively at different points. And they're more the experts on having studied everything in great detail. Our job as a board is to come up with a decision, not this evening, but what I want everyone to know is that, you know, we've had the presentation tonight. We've all had the opportunity to meet individually, to ask our more detailed questions, to have a better understanding of everything that's going on with the changes. We've all received numerous emails from the community. And after, at the end of this work session tonight, I'll open it up to those that want to address the board. And just food for thought, since there's so many people in the room, I think it would be very difficult to hear from everyone, so if you can kinda group up with your comments, I don't care if you all wanna come and stand here together, but if you have one spokesperson for some of you, that would be, that would be great. Also, after all of that, we will be having another work session before the board meeting on May 6th to further discuss what we've heard from you tonight, any future emails, past emails, any discussion topics or questions that didn't come up tonight that you think of later. But my question right now to the board before we move on to our next topic, is there anything that the board still needs between now and our next study session from the input team or administration? Anything you can think of and if, if there is, if you would send an email, that would be helpful. Do you have a question, also?
I was wondering, because we have so many people here for this topic, so just throw it out, is there an opportunity that we could move Point G up to Nows so that we could have these people make their address and, and then we could move on to the next topics?
In fairness to what was publicized, just to when the public input would be, I don't feel that that would be appropriate. So I would, and according to our protocol that we follow, it would be at the end of the work session. So I, I would say no. There's nothing, no other comments, we'll move on to the next topic, which is the budget and enrollment. Julie?
So we'll start talking about the budget. This is, for all of you who've never been here before, a very exciting topic. Hopefully we'll, I can explain a few things to you as you go through, go through this. The board has agreed that we're gonna have a, we're gonna base our budget on a 2% increase in our revenue. That increase, at 2%, gives us about $1.2 million in additional revenue for our district. And, and enrollment, our enrollment increase gives us about $1.8 million of additional revenue for our district for adding another 252 students. We also are anticipating an increase in some special education revenue, about $500,000. We're planning on transporting our Aspen students and because of that, we will see an additional revenue of, of about $300,000 if we transport all of their students. Our district's demographic is changing quite significantly and because of that, we are seeing a reduction in what we call basic skills revenue or compensatory because our number of free reduced students start decreasing in our district. So we get less money for that. If you compare our district with the two surrounding districts, we get about $500,000 in basic skills revenue. A Burnsville School District gets over $6 million and I would say somewhere close to that as well for Shakka Peace School District. So our district definitely does not see revenue coming in for this, that specific compensatory revenue. We'll also see a little bit of increase in interest revenue, about $30,000 is what I'm projecting for this next year. So about three, a little, almost $3.8 million of additional revenue for next year is what we're anticipating at this point in time. Some of the staffing needs, which our board has already approved, however, I'm gonna start at the top. Wages and benefit increases for our current staff are $2.8 million. So 2% funding formally at $1.2 million doesn't cover the cost of our ongoing wages and benefits. So for those of you who think we're, the district and school districts need money from the, from the legislature, we do because it doesn't cover ongoing costs. And so you'll see districts surrounding us, and that's why the cuts comment came from one of our board members, is because they have to cut because if you're not a growing district, the money that you receive from the legislature isn't enough to cover what your ongoing costs are. So automatically you're looking at making cuts. So our district is fortunate enough that we're a growing district and so those wages and benefits you see there are $2.8 million. We base that on either a no one or a four-year, four-year average cost. We anticipate adding 8.7 FTE teaching staff for regular education to manage our growth. Additional six custodial staff, that's from the referendum dollars that was passed this last fall for the additional spaces that are coming onboard this next fall. And anticipating future spaces, and we have a lot of transition coming in this next year, so we're gonna need those staff to help us in that transition as well. We have additional secretarial staff at Lola Delago and we need additional 3.9 FTE of teaching, specialty teaching staff. I think the last time I came to the board, it was a .7 and that has been adjusted at a 3.9. We have an additional need of a .5 social worker at Lola Delago. Additional FTE of technology, that FTE of technology is coming again from those referendum dollars. A restructure of assessment and data staff, about 20,000 and an assistant HR at 120. That also is included in our operating referendum. So there are some dollars here that are operating referendum needs. Just as we are continuing to grow, we have needs throughout those different departments. Additional expenditures, about $220,000 in utility costs. Custodial budget increases just to manage our additional spaces. Increase in our supply budgets for those as well. And transportation, just due to all the different activities that we have across the district. $125,002 additional buses at this point in time for next year. That includes our new students and transporting Aspen students. And then a $600,000 allocation from our capital, operating capital. And then we know we'll have an additional $200,000 and that was part of the billing referendum that we would utilize some money from our capital dollars. So all those expenditures include our 5.225 million. You know, that's $1.4 million over what we're receiving in revenues at this point. These costs bring our fund balance somewhere down between 10 and a half percent to 11% at this point. We've hired the majority of, if this go, if this is approved by the board, we will have hired the majority of our staffing that we need for the new elementary school and all those other additions, a little, about a year early, which is why you're also seeing a little bit more expenditures there than we have in revenues. So you'll see very little coming in the following year for those referendum items. And then we do have, had, had some discussions and with Ross Rietz, our activity director, about increasing our activity costs. We do, we are seeing quite a significant increase in our umpires and referees as, as well as other costs just to have people at our games to help with supervision and all those different areas. And so we're looking at additional activity fees for that and we know we'll have some costs coming from that as well, so we're working through those and we'll be bringing that forward to the board and Ross Rietz will be coming to a meeting to have that discussion with you as well. In the future, we're also looking at some areas that we are not utilizing in our levy certification and that's an achievement and integration levy. We utilize very little of those dollars right now. We've talked about this in the past. That's something we'd like to look at for this fall for the levy certification. It would increase our levy certification about a half a percent to be able to do this and get some additional revenue to help with closing the achievement gap. And then, again, looking at open enrollment for the 2020, 2021 school year and beyond and what does that look like so we can work on, what does it look like? As you can tell, we need additional students in order to make sure that we are able to handle our, our growth here, so. Got, any questions?
Any questions?
I went through that very fairly quickly, but you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them, yes.
As far as timing wise, I think just to kinda go over that, I mean, because I know the state has not already settled the budget and the governor threw out 3% and 2% and the state, the, you know, Republican Senate, about half a percent.
As the Republicans put out a half a percent increase?
So, and we're basing this on 2%. You know, and I know May or extended session, whatever happens. Any thought on, I mean, I know we talked about 2%, but I, you know, get a little worried about that. Maybe it's about a half a percent.
I get worried about it as well. So a half a percent is about $300,000, if you wanna look at it that way and it definitely would bring down the dollar amount from new students as well because we wouldn't get those, that additional money from that either, as well. I, I'm gonna continue to hedge my bets over here at the 2%. I think that we'll end up somewhere close to that. I don't believe they'll go down to a half a percent. The harder part for me is thinking that we'll get any additional money for special education. I think that's why the Republicans put out a half a percent, thinking that's the leverage point. This is just my opinion because it's just a guess at this point. But that's the leverage point to say, we only have X amount of money, where do you want it? Because that's very typical of what the legislature will do, say, this is our pot of money. How do you wanna split it up? Is it gonna be on the formula where it affects everybody all the same? Or is it going to be in special education to help offset that additional cost that it's over, that it's pulling from our general fund?
Can you just talk a little bit about the timeline for us, what we have to do considering?
So about May 21st, I believe is the deadline for this decision to be made by the legislature. Our board has to make a decision on this budget by June 30th. And so if, if it doesn't pass at 2%, then the board will have to make a decision as to not to hire or do you wanna dip into fund balance some more and go, you know, down to that 10%? We have a fund balance policy of somewhere between 8 and 12%. The district right now currently is about 14%. You can see by doing all of these projects, along with the agreement that the board agreed to use some money for construction, it gets us a little over 10 and a half percent.
Is that taking out the shortage, the 1.4 or, you know, there's 1.4 million.
Yep, that's including.
So that's what you're saying, taking out the shortage to drop it to 10 and a half?
Utilizing our fund balance of the 1.4 million brings our fund balance a little over 10 and a half percent.
So we go from about 14% fund balance to about 10 in one year?
One year.
Okay, so not sustainable for a long period of time.
Well, the, the thing that, and that's why I mentioned earlier, is that because we're hiring some of these staff a year early to help us in this transition, I hopefully wouldn't be hiring additional, you know, just the staff that we need for additional students for next year, is what we'd be looking at.
Yeah, but ongoing, I mean, it's not, it's ongoing.
We'll have additional students hopefully to make up for that shortfall.
Okay.
To kinda pull us back up. It is a little scary and it's not sustainable if we don't get the additional students. You are correct in that sense, that if we were to be able to continue to grow, that that would be definitely something we'd have to look at.
Are there any other questions? Jonathan? Jonathan?
I'm sorry.
Jonathan?
I, I was just gonna ask, can, can you elaborate for?
I was just going to ask, can, can you elaborate for, I don't think I've used my new guy card on you yet.
Okay.
So, new board member question, when you're talking about, you use the phrase hiring folks maybe a little early.
Okay.
Elaborate on that, because that just sounds to me odd.
Okay, so, when we, we, that's a great question, because maybe I'm speaking to a group that here that doesn't, we went through a process when we passed the referendum that we knew that we would need X amount of staff for each of the three years until we opened the new elementary school. And so, we, when we looked at that list, and we looked at our list here of expenditures, we found that we were actually hiring, like, some of our custodial staff early, some of our technology staff early, to help us because we're transitioning through this, and I don't think, when we looked at it back then, we thought, okay, now we'd have this additional school, so we need these staff. This year of transition is key to help us open those buildings, so we're actually asking for them a year early.
Can I add a little bit to that?
Sure.
So, because the operational staff, we have construction at every single site, and so, that's taxing to the current staff. So, we want to borrow from the future to, and give them the help they need.
And then, as we transition from one building to the next, and kids moving, and people moving, and things moving.
Yes.
We need help with that as well.
Thank you.
Mary, could you?
Yes, and I just wanted to point out also, the 600K in here, that's a one-time, that's not a repeatable.
No, you're correct.
So, we've got, we've got a few one-time startup things that are going to hit in the next year.
Right.
That hopefully, if the legislature falls into place and we keep up with inflation, that we're going to see a little bit more of a study. Right now, we're going through a hump, so to speak.
Right. And just to clarify, the legislature's never kept up with inflation. Sometimes, so, my own opinion again, but as far as I know, that we, we have never kept up with inflation, yes?
Oh, we're still unclear right now about Hamilton Ridge. We have no, that might come into play. It's a lot of years.
I can't really, as far as I know, everything is still a go, and so, I have to plan that way at this point.
Yep. Just great opportunity, Julie outlined kind of the two different budget, budget proposals that are at the, with the legislators right now. There is still time before the end of the session to reach out to our legislators, to board members and community members, who the legislators always love to hear from their constituents. So, an opportunity for you, as you've looked at, what the difference in a 5% or a 2% or 3% on the formula means to our ongoing costs and ultimately, our services to kids. So, I encourage you to reach out and share your perspectives with our legislators.
And if I could just say one more thing, because I do have an audience.
No.
When we talk about special education, just so you know, the requirement of special education in this district costs the general fund because we don't get enough money from our special education funding, 6 million dollars. So, 6 million dollars of our general fund, we call it the cross subsidy, the amount of money that special education, we don't get the reimbursement for from the, from the state from. So, our district had cost 6 million. It continues to rise, so as we continue to grow and have more students, even if we weren't growing, the number of special ed needs that seems to keep, continue to grow in every district. And so, that cost continues to grow from 6 million to 6.2 to 6.4, and, and so, it's taking out of our general fund the needs that we need for our other classrooms as well. And that's why we ask for the money from the state for that as well.
May I elaborate?
Yes.
For those people in the audience who don't know, the requirement to provide the level of special education that we do, which is a good requirement, was mandated by law. It's what's called an unfunded mandate, and it was mandated at the federal level. And since, and during the time, the federal government promised to fund that and subsidize the states for that also, and that never really happened. So, there's also a lot of stuff in the news right now about bills being introduced at the federal level to finally fund that, which is something that if you're going to go out and try to advocate for education in general, that would be a great area to do at both the state and the federal level, because that's why we have the cross subsidy, is that we're stuck paying the bill out of the general fund, so all students suffer, not just the ones that, that need the X of the special assistance.
Michael?
I just had a quick question. Is there, to build on what you said in terms of spreading word, several of us board members have had the opportunity to go into the state capitol, meet with our representatives, and advocate for these changes. Is there a place that we can ethically put the easy contact information if people actually want to follow up and call? We get it in our email every week from MSBA. If you want to call and advocate for 3% or 2%, here's who you call. What's the easiest way for people to find that information? I don't know that we can share it publicly, but can we?
Oh, yeah.
Just, it's a really easy to click here to get the number and call, makes it easier. Is there anyone in the audience who wants Scott County website?
Scott County will have all your elected officials, if you want to go up.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then, to only one policy and a procedure, is that you, Julie?
Yes, that is me as well. This is a policy that's coming forward because of new requirements by the SEC and, it's related to our bonds, so all of our bonds, we have to have our compliance policy to make sure that we're complying with all the regulations. So, this is a new policy that we've never had before, making sure that we're complying with all the new regulations for all of our bonds, not just the newest ones that we've passed, but we have several other ones as well. And so, this will make sure that our district is complying with all those requirements. We have a policy for it, and then I have to make sure that we're following this policy to ensure that we're completing all of those requirements. And this will be on an annual basis that we have to do all of these, this list of things. And if you want me to go through them, I can, otherwise, I'm, it's in the policy.
Just, so, the basis of this policy, where this came from, is this MSBA, or is it like others, or is it?
It's from others.
Others, okay. All right.
Any other questions? Okay, this was a first reading, and it will come back on our basics meeting for the second reading. In the meantime, if you have questions, please get them to the superintendent relations.
Excellent. It's that time of year for you to get some updates in terms of my evaluation. As you know, there are two primary ways that I get evaluated as the superintendent. First of all, I'm evaluated on the progress that, that we've made on our district priorities, our district goals. Well, that's a part of my evaluation, certainly is a team effort, and throughout the year, you get updates from my team, who are leading that priority work and those goals throughout the year. In addition, what we've provided to you, you'll get at the end of the meeting, is a packet with all of those charters from what those original goal teams set out to do, a summary and progress along the way of what we've been achieved, what we've achieved, and what else there is yet to achieve. So, that's a portion of, of my evaluation, and again, I'm grateful to the team that does the heavy lifting of that work, and we've come back to you for the operational oversight that you have as a board on those goals. In addition to provide evidence of my goals, you also have an opportunity to, to evaluate me against the duties aligned in my, and spelled out in my job description. Much of the time, the work that I do in my job description is also aligned to those district goals, but there's a lot of other work that I do that isn't a part of those goals. The last couple of years, and I think especially, I thought it was important as I was coming in as a new superintendent, I also did provide some reflection in each of those job description areas, and I chose not to do that this year. The ongoing information that I share with you on a weekly basis, I think, as I was looking and starting that process again, really does, I think, give you an idea of what I'm doing, aligned to all of those job responsibilities. In addition, you get updates from various team members, so some of the job descriptions, you know, I have other team members who support that work, but you've gotten updates from that as well. So, what I would ask you to do as you're evaluating my performance is to, you know, reflect on those weekly newsletters that I provide to you, and the work that I do in our community, in our schools, in the state, to represent us and to work to ensure that our mission, which is to educate all learners, to reach their full potential, as contributing productive members of our ever-changing global community, happens every single day. So, what you'll be getting as a follow-up to this is you'll be getting links sent to you from Martha that provide an opportunity for you to assess both the district goals as well as my job performance against my job description. And then, you can see in the timeline, the board will continue to work on gathering that data, and then ultimately, coming forward at an upcoming meeting where you'll talk as a team and then share perspectives with me as well. So, if you have any questions throughout the process, don't hesitate to, to contact me or myself. Any questions at all?
Just a note, Martha, I think we'll be sending that out to all of us tomorrow, and you have until May 8th. I'd suggest you try and get it done sooner than later. Time goes by, and all of a sudden, you'll be in a hurry to get it done. So, that will be the start, and in your board packet is the timeline evaluation, so you can just review that as we go forward, and I believe this will all come to the board, or at a board meeting on May 20th, so keep it moving on. And with that, move on to the engagement, the stakeholder survey.
Excellent, thank you. Again, I am very cognizant of all of the people we have here that want to speak to the board. I'm also grateful that you're also here, because this is a great opportunity. We ask staff, parents, and students to take surveys, and the purpose of those surveys is to collect feedback from each one of our stakeholders around those things that are most important to us, and really provide us an opportunity to use feedback in our improvement efforts, our improvement efforts as a district, and our improvement efforts as school, individual schools, and programs as well. So, what we have in front of you tonight, and I will whip through this very quickly because there's a lot of people here, but this is the third year we've collected data, and this will be up on our website, the full surveys, all, all of the surveys, the information will be up on our website later this week, so parents and community members can review that. So, today, what I want to do is just provide a brief overview of, of some of that. Overall, we had really positive results in areas, and then we certainly have areas that, that we can improve as well. So, just really quickly, thanks, Jeff. Our participation was up, last year, we did a bit of a dip. Maybe it was because year one, people were really excited about something new, so in year two, our response rate slipped a little bit, but we were excited to get that back up. So, as you can see here, and again, this is just a sampling of the questions that we have, we can see from our parent surveys, first of all, and we've put down, although the data that you see in front of you is this year's data, we put the three-year trends there, so you can see where we increased from last year and where we decreased from last year. Thanks, Jeff. So, students at my school are respectful to each other. You can see, we really look at that strongly agree, agree percentage, and, and feel good about that. And again, I don't know that I need to read this to everyone, but I wanted to give you a sampling of what we had. We did, if you, Jeff, you took us down just a little bit. The question, my child likes to go to school, that was one that we haven't, we've worked on the wording of that over the years. I think in the student one, it says, I'm excited to go to school, or something like that, and we changed that question even with our students to, I like being in school. That's really what we wanted to assess with that, so we'll take a look at that. Student surveys, the same thing. The question that we had, I feel safe and secure in my school, I'll show it a little bit, some of our school safety and security data. That was a place last year, if you recall, board members, that we took a dip. And again, that survey was given two weeks after the Parkland incident in Florida. Regardless, we took seriously our, the perception of our parents, our staff, and our students in terms of some areas in which they didn't feel safe, and we made some improvements, and it was really nice to see that across the board, that data has increased. So, you can see here, just a sampling of questions from students. We care a lot about that question that says, I feel cared about and connected to at least one adult in my school. And you can see 95%, almost 96% of our elementary students, they, they agree or strongly agree to that. Our secondary is at 83%. We know for the success of students, especially through the strategic planning process, as we talk about social and emotional learning, we know the importance of our students feeling connected deeply and comfortable going to at least one adult should, should they have any needs. So, that's something that I know, as we look at that new strategic direction, we'll continue to take a look at how we increase that. And then, with our staff surveys, same thing, we've got three years of data there, and you can see, we talked, asked some questions about collaboration, we asked some questions about them being supportive in some of the innovative work that they do, and again, you'll get a chance to look at all of that as you want. I do, that last, thanks, Jeff, that last slide, I'm proud to be associated with Prior Lake Savvy Area Schools and its brand. That continues to be just an unbelievable data set to us, and, and something that daily, we want to continue to work really, really hard on. Our staff, especially the staff that are supporting and working closely with kids every day, are our greatest resource. So, to the degree that they have a high sense of pride in the work that they do on behalf of our school district, is the degree to which our students are going to continue to thrive. We're really proud of that. And then, we just showed in some of our priority work, some of the data around instructional excellence, and, and how students especially feel about feedback that they get from teachers in ways that they support them, questions as well. Thanks, Jeff, around certified staff. We want to take a look at our ESTEM, that continues to be one of the pride areas of our school district, and we want to be sure that we're continuing to grow that. So, we asked some questions of the teachers, especially about how they incorporate ESTEM into their work. Had some questions about educational equity and excellence, as we continue to work to close achievement gaps and ensure that our environments are welcoming for all students. And then, lastly, I did want to highlight some of that school safety and security, where we saw a drop last year in some of the data, and then a rebound on that. We also asked a question about our mission statement from our parents and students. The district is achieving the mission, and again, you can see that we've got a dip there, that's something we're going to want to explore a little bit more, and you can see how that breakup goes with elementary students as well as secondary students. I also provided a sampling, just in this presentation, of some of the perception data from staff and parents regarding my role as a superintendent, and also, board members' role. So, you'll get a chance again to see that full data set, both on perception of, of me as a leader, as well as board members as well. So, I know I went quickly with that. I did also want to share, in addition to the surveys, there are opportunities for stakeholders to provide comments. Board members, I have envelopes with comments related to questions about the board for you. The other comments, the administrators who leave buildings and departments see those, and they use those comments really to dig a little bit deeper on the data, and really to, to share themes with their staff about areas for improvement and areas for celebration. And that's why the comments are helpful. I know in the school safety and security areas, last year, we were able to dig a little bit deeper on some of the lower data results because we had some comments there. You can see the timeline in our next plan with this, tomorrow with our administrators, we'll be spending some work. That'll be the first time that they see departments and building data, so they'll start digging into that with their teams to really say, okay, where are we doing well, where are those areas we want to keep improving? We'll also then share data with our staff members on the upcoming days, as well as getting those links on our website with the updated data, publishing it on the website, and then we'll continue to dig into this, to use it, to help us get better. So, fast overview, really grateful for stakeholders who share with us their perceptions so that we can continue to improve. Happy to take any questions, if you have any?
We have this all in our board packet, and it will be on the website, so you can spend more time looking at it in the future too.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and attending our board side work session, and for advocating for your children, as we know, they're your most prized possession. And I do believe that boundary changes are difficult, and they are emotional, and they do change family structure a little bit sometimes, and make people have to do more difficult things, make rearrangements and things like that. And the board is very sympathetic to all of that. We understand each of you have individual needs, but in the end, the board has to make a decision based on the best interest of all the students in the district. That's not an easy decision. Based on the many emails we've received. Based on the many emails we've received, it seems that there's one neighborhood and another neighborhood and one neighborhood's not going to be happy. Because everything that we've heard tonight, everything seems to be kind of on the same plane and it's going to come down to two different neighborhoods. Not a good place for us to be in. We have 23 names on this list right now that would like to speak tonight. So I will open it up to comment. If you could please limit your comments to three minutes or less, that would be appreciated. If you can group some of your thoughts, that would also be appreciated. And with that, oh, the other thing is, we've gotten a lot of emails. I've tried to answer all of them. I think I may have missed a few and I apologize for that. The first person is Penny Peterson. If you'd like to come up here to the front where it says presenter.
So I'm Penny Peterson. And first, I just want to thank you for listening to our emails and being on the school board. I appreciate, sorry, I'm trying to let my emotions not get intact to just speak nor to speak in front of people. So this is very lucky. Just a few things that I wanted to highlight. I come from the Carriage Hills development and I probably can echo from just a lot that it we just, it started off on the wrong foot. I went to that first Monday night meeting in support of my friends that are in Nob Hill. We kind of see each other as one neighborhood. And while I had my phone up, realized that the plans that were up on the wall and the plans on my phone did not match. And so none of my Carriage Hills friends knew anything about it. And so coming home that night, messaged a bunch of them and they were all blindsided. So I just think that's a frustrating, frustrating process to like start your foot off from. But just things I wanted to highlight from my perspective and things that I kind of heard tonight was, looking at the boundaries, I hear it echoed a lot of that Prior Lake has a small town feel. We're large, but we have a small town feel. We're large, we have a small town feel. And so if that's the case, I come from a small town, looking at these plans, it's, let's keep those plans where that small town feels intact. So for example, we get to walk to school and we do it when the weather's nice, excuse me, as the weather's nice, we get to walk to school. When there's music programs, we also walk to school to help prevent for parking. We do a bunch of that stuff. And for us, there's only a small window of time. My oldest now is in middle school. She'll never build a walk to school ever again. I mean, I guess she probably could, but I mean, it is a large walk. She'll never be able to do that. And so I just think that's a huge thing for us is that being able to have those opportunities to keep that small town feel, you feel that when you're able to walk to school and do that. And so I just hope that that's in consideration. It kind of goes into just the proximity. I mean, we are just blocks away from the school. I mean, we can see it. My neighbors can hear the bell. I mean, the bell goes off and there it is. I mean, if you can hear the bell and you can see the school, that should just be taken into consideration, is my feel. The other thing was, I saw on one of the slides, on one of them, there was a bunch of schools that said it had identical boundaries on both plans. And there's quite a few schools that were in there. So if that's the case, then let's look at what developments are being the most impacted and try not to change them up. So if you have a bunch of schools that are identical on both plans, then you really only have a couple developments. What was that thing? I've noticed too, on the maps, they've become slightly better, but over the course of what's online and what I'm seeing, the Jeffers Pond icon, although I can echo amongst all of us, is not just accurately depicted on there. It is showing that it, the school sits across from Raspberry Ridge. And it is not from Raspberry Ridge. It is literally right across from Carriage Hills. And if you look at some of the maps, it's down there. And I just think that, I know it's a small thing, but it is a large thing. It needs to be, if you're going to do this process, no matter what the outcome, as hard as it would be to swallow, at least it's an honest process. And I think that needs to be into consideration as well. And I think that's just me. I don't know, I just feel like the small town feel, if you keep saying that, then it needs to be taken into consideration. We are growing and I get that, but I would just be very sad. And then they're, they want to talk to, I don't, they're on the list, so I don't know if you can.
I'm speaking for Terry something earlier. Was Terry's last name?
You're going to go in order?
Okay, that's fine, yeah, okay.
Becky Schultz and then James Kukka?
Hi there. So I'm Becky Schultz. I live in the Carriage Hills neighborhood as well, Carriage Hills, Nob Hill neighborhood. I feel like I'm going to echo a lot of the things that Penny just said. I found myself shaking my head a lot to the feelings that she had as well as the logic. So I heard a couple times tonight, this is not an emotional, or let's not make this emotional. It is emotional, but we're using logic as well. So when I look at the two plans, and we talk, I can't remember the person's name that was sitting here, Dennis. So he said a lot of times, and this plan, it's just a longer drive. And he mentioned that a couple times, or it's longer to get to school. And that, that kind of resonated with me because yes, it is longer to get to school, but it's more than that. It's the community school feeling that we have, being able to walk to school, bike to school. As my kindergartner gets older, we'll allow him to do that. It's an important thing for us from a community school perspective. We moved from a neighborhood where the school board and the superintendent was not real transparent with us. And those are, that was one of the reasons we moved. So we sold our house, house in that community, built a house in this neighborhood. And there were, there were about three or four criteria of why did we build a house in Carriage Hills, Nob Hill neighborhood. One, the most important was the proximity to the school. We wanted a school that was close to school. I was a walker to school. I loved that feeling. I loved being close to my school. And so that was number one, we wanted to be close to a neighborhood school. So we also wanted to be in a neighborhood that, and a community that truly felt like a community. And that's what we felt with Carriage Hills, Nob Hill, as well as we lumped Jeffers Pond in that as well. So main criteria for us selling our home and moving into Jeffers Pond, moving into Prior Lake, was the Jeffers Pond school and being so close to the school. So when, when I went to that meeting on April 10th, I also felt like a lot of our neighbors were blindsided and we had to communicate to them. So we banded together to communicate with them really what's happening. And the plans have shifted and changed, which I understand, plans shift and change. But we felt like we're really advocating for our neighborhood to stay in the Jeffers Pond school. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Kukka?
Hi, it's Chuka.
And then Jerry Novak?
I can ask you a question about the transportation times. So how long does it take to fill up a bus with kids?
Depending on their age.
Well, according to Melissa, it took 40 to 45 minutes pre-Jeffers Pond, which I kind of agree with because if it takes 20 or 25 minutes to load up a bus and 20 minutes to get to Westwood, is what she was saying, correct? So my question is, if it takes 25 to 30 minutes to load up a bus and it's 20 minutes across, then we've still at 40, 45 minutes from the Carriage Hills neighborhood to Westwood?
I don't think that's accurate. It won't be 45 minutes.
This isn't a question.
Okay, that's, well, because it has to do, because I'm going to say, in what I say that it's going to take 45 minutes and I don't want to be wrong or discount what you said earlier. Because we don't have those numbers. We didn't have those numbers online.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thanks to the board for allowing us public comment finally. We've been wanting to voice our opinion for some time. Thanks to the design team for answering the input team in drawing C1. And thanks for the Carriage Hills and Nob Hill neighborhood for voicing their concerns. These people, the Carriage Hills neighborhood, all are wearing these. Can we get hands of them?
Stand up.
So there's, a lot of us here that are concerned because they could lose their school. In option B1, that happens. They live within minutes of Jeffers Pond and with B1, they're targeted for displacement to Westwood, four and a half miles away. And it is a 20 to 25 minute drive in traffic. You know, whether we go at times when there's not traffic, like I said, B1 will have our children waiting to open road students, getting dropped off at Jeffers Pond as they go right by on the way to Westwood, through downtown and on congested streets. They're volunteers at the school because of proximity. They read with the kids at the school, they run the carnival, they build bee houses, they build birdhouses, they build boot racks, and they're there because it's close. They run the carnival, they sell raffle tickets, they buy raffle tickets, they sap trees and pull weeds, they sell books and they buy books. And they're 475 household strong that you'll be displacing with B1. Most importantly today is they put you guys in the position you're in and the position you'll be in on May 6th to vote on the boundary changes. They believe you'll vote for C1 and keep them from being displaced. Jeffers Pond was built for this neighborhood. Many, including me and my family, moved here because it is in the Jeffers Pond boundary. And I've moved twice and I've stayed in it because of Jeffers Pond. I'm looking at the two options with almost the same results numbers wise. However, I believe there are a number of availables that haven't been considered. One of them is bus times. Bus times for our kids would increase to pre-Jeffers Pond times. Another missing statistic is displacements. And nowhere do we see the number of displacements per option. I imagine the 475 households displaced with B1 dwarfs the other numbers. Now, I'm assuming that the board is somewhat familiar with the process and the means in which the two boundaries options were designed. We had a pretty bubble graphs and decision models that I assume were purchased from Team Works International. And originally, the results had flaws. Neither of the initially presented boundary options, A1 or B1, satisfied their own rules. They left Carriage Hills and Nob Hills neighborhood at an unreasonable inequity. Their words, not mine. But the guiding change document allowed for input. 90% of the public input concerned Carriage Hills and Nob Hill students being displaced.
James, your time is up.
Okay. It's posted online and I suggest you strongly visit it. C1 is the end result, a result that satisfies the guiding change document. Honestly, I'm not sure why B1 is still on the table. And in order for the entire process to be justified, C1 needs to be your selection. A1 and B1 were mistakes that have been corrected by the process. C1 is the result of soliciting.
And then Kyle Manega after that.
I'm going to stand if that's okay. Hi, my name's Jerry Novak. I am a resident of the Northwood Meadows neighborhood. We're just south of Arctic Lake. If you can tell on the map, I'd point it out, but I'm up here to try to talk, keep the emotions out of it and just stick to the facts because we all have the same concerns for the safety of our children, the commute times, the drive across the lake. I did witness it firsthand last summer when I had to take my children to Westwood for kids company. It does add 20 minutes to my commute both ways to and from school. My kids only ride the bus one day a week, so that still is a concern. The other concern I have in just sticking to the facts that were presented tonight is in the percentages of capacity at five years and also the total volume of student population at the two schools. When you look at B1, which I'm in complete favor of and have been from the beginning, Jeffers Pond has a 1% increase from the current in the projected five-year capacity, putting them at 81%. And Westwood has a 4% increase in projected capacity from current, which puts them at 74%. Also, there's only 15 total patient difference between the two schools in that proposal. If you look at option C1, you're seeing a 6% reduction from current in the projected five-year for Jeffers Pond, putting them at 74%. At Westwood, you're at a 10% increase from current projected for a five-year of 80%. So we're basically just flipping the numbers, right? However, you're looking at over 100, 100 total patients difference in the two schools with option C1. So that's where I'm trying to put the facts to paper and understand if your primary goal is utilization and capacity in these schools, then the numbers favor B1. When you take into emotions, you can be right either way because we all feel the same way about the safety, the commutes, the drive times and the neighborhood feel. My son currently goes to Five Hocks and he will be displaced no matter what the decision. He's going to be going to either Jeffers or Westwood. My youngest is enrolling in preschool this year and will attend Jeffers Pond, which helped us to solidify that in thinking when A1 and B1 were on the table, that that would be an easy transition for him. So you guys have a tough decision and I just wanted to get up here with less than 10 days to prepare because we only found out about this a few days ago, that I really want B1 and so does my neighborhood. So please support us in that. Thank you.
All right, I got three minutes. I'll try to keep it succinct as I can. My name's Kyle Manega. I live in the Nob Hill neighborhood, so support Nob Hill and Carriage Hills. I was also part of the input committee. So Jeff and Terry know my advocacy for my neighborhood, right? Because we're a community. And I think what everybody heard today, and I want the board to make sure that you kind of, this saturates, right? You marinated in this a little bit, is, was talked about priority. And remember what the first priority was that you guys talked about? Value of neighborhood schools. I want you to think about that for the next couple of weeks, right? What is that value? What does that mean to you guys? Because it means a lot to us. Another one is capacity. So lady just before me talked about numbers. I think you need to look at those numbers again because if you look at capacity and enrollment and future growth, C1 makes the best sense for all the schools, especially for Jeffers. If you think it lowers the enrollment, so it opens up future growth capacity for any future growth at the Burling Farm or any other pockets that seem to be popping up left and right. From a drive time standpoint, a transportation standpoint, again, I think James talked about it really eloquently, is every day, if you look at B1 for the kids who live in Nob Hill and Carriage Hills, they'll be going by their school once in the morning and once at, in the evening, right? And they're going to pass it twice a day for the remainder of their elementary schools, time in the elementary school. So you've got to think about that stuff, right? These kids live the closest to the school, but yet they're going to pass it twice a day for maybe the next five or six years, right? So is that fair to those kids? And I think that's what we need to really think about is, what's fair to the kids who live closest to these neighborhood schools? And again, I go back to that priority is value of the neighborhood schools and make sure you guys are thinking about that. I'll yield the rest of my time to the next person. Thank you. After Amber is Allison Gagne.
Hi, my name is Amber Lenhart. My husband had sent a letter to the board. My husband has been a psychologist for the past 17 years. I think one thing I want to talk to is the primary goal and this should be our kids, not numbers. There's been a lot of talk about how emotional is, how logical this is. At the end of the day, this should be about our kids. And going back to what Kyle said just recently, it's also about our neighborhoods and the value of those neighborhoods. The other thing we should be thinking about is kids and the mental health that change that this could have an impact on them. My husband wrote a great letter. I'm not really going to be doing it justice, but I think it's incredibly important that we displace the least amount of kids possible. He actually sent a lot of great references over about school changes being associated with lower reading and math achievement, behavioral difficulties, grade repetition and lower graduation rates. The amount of students that are being displaced between the two schools needs to be taken account, into account. Not only that, I'm going to have three kids in Jeffers Pond next year. One of them is a little five-year-old nugget who's going to be there for a year, who's been looking forward to going to this school since her brother and sister started. She's going to be there for a year and then she's going to have to switch out of that school. So I really don't want to know what that's going to, what the implications are going to be for her little five and six-year-old mind when I have to tell her, you're going to get attached to this school, but guess what? Even though you're going to pass it every day, we have to leave that school and go to a school 40 minutes away. And yes, I do think that it is probably 40 minutes because if you think about it, I'm a mile away from the school. Takes me 10 minutes. One of them is a little five-year-old nugget who's gonna be there for a year, who's been looking forward to going to this school since her brother and sister started. She's gonna be there for a year and then she's gonna have to switch out of that school. So I really don't want to know what that's gonna... What the implications are gonna be for her little five and six-year-old mind when I have to tell her, you're gonna get attached to this school. But guess what? Even though you're gonna pass it every day, we have to leave that school and go to a school 40 minutes away. And yes, I do think that it is probably 40 minutes, because if you think about it, I'm a mile away from the school. Takes me 10 minutes to get to the school on the bus now. 4.4 miles, if you're just using logic behind it, that's 40 minutes. Putting a six-year-old on the bus for 40 minutes does not make sense to me. It truly doesn't. And there's already issues on the bus right now with my kids and they're on the school on the bus for 10 minutes. And I have sent letters to the school about this as well. So I just want you to take into consideration our neighborhood, obviously, see which plan I'm here in support of. But I'm not just in... I'm not trying to put neighborhood against neighborhood. I want all the kids to be thought of in this and that's what we need to be talking about. Numbers are important, I get it, but our kids' mental health and our kids' development is the number one thing that should be thought of in this process. Thank you.
And then June.
We signed the wrong sheet, so I'm gonna... We're swapping for each other. I'm Amy Nelson, I'm a parent of a Twin Oaks student and a Jeffers Pond student. We live at Carriage Hills. In fact, we live less than .2 miles from Carriage Hills. That is so close that had it not be for 21, the highway that divides our neighborhood from Carriage Hills. We wouldn't qualify for bus transportation. We would be walkers. We are that close. I can see the playground from my bedroom window. I can hear the kids on the playground, I can hear the bells. I can hear the buses take off in the afternoon when they take off. We are that close. I agree, this is an emotional decision, but let's take that totally off. This has to be a logical decision. We are close. Most of my neighbors work north of the river. We picked our location based on easy access to 169. So I have... My daughter will be a fifth grader. This will not impact my major league if we are gone for one year. It will impact my neighbors who have kindergartners or preschoolers right now. They will drive their kids to Kids Company, which currently takes two minutes, will take 20 minutes in the morning. Then it will take that extended period to get their kids, or to get to 169 for the commute. And then do it all over again at the end of the day. When we're talking about preschoolers and kindergartners. That's an extra 40 minutes-ish for their parents to get to work on time that they're spending at preschool, or at Kids Co. In the morning, in the after... Throughout the week, that adds up to two and a half plus hours. That's significant for young kids. So keep that in mind when you're talking about proximity. There's more than just the transportation times, right? There's the commute times that also then double up on that. So logically, I think C1 is the better option because of that proximity to those neighborhoods for schools. And for the access for simple commutes.
And then Tricia. Julie? Julie.
Mine's the same as what everybody else has said for C1.
Okay, thank you. Tricia Jacobs?
Hey, everybody, I'm Tricia Jacobs. I am part of the Meadow Hills, Northwoods Meadows neighborhood. And I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I think it'll be pretty quick. But it is close to everybody's heart, so like everybody else, I'm trying to keep my emotion out of it. But one thing that I don't think has been brought up tonight yet is safety. And I think that is something that takes a top concern to my heart because my kids are my top priority. And with option C1, our kids would have to cross not one, but two major highways. I don't like that as a parent. And everybody at both sides were concerned about busing, right? If I look at Jeffers Pond and I'm in Jeffers Pond parking lot, and this is just MapQuest. This is not like bus times, commute times, I'm a working mom time. If I'm from Jeffers Pond to Westwood, it's six minutes. From my neighborhood to Westwood, it's 10 minutes. From my neighborhood to Jeffers Pond or Five Hocks, it's about five minutes. So you're essentially doubling the time and going backwards. So I don't think... I think there should be a small compromise for everybody. It hurts everybody, right? Like my kids have to leave Five Hocks, they love Five Hocks. But should they have to have double the commute time of someone from Carriage Hills or Nob Hill? No. Like, everybody should have to sacrifice in that and I don't want my kids to have a larger sacrifice. It'll greatly impact the traffic patterns when you're putting us across those two major highways and that needs to be taken into consideration. And, you know, you talked about... One gentleman talked about 90% of the public input so far has been from the Carriage Hill and Nob neighborhoods. Well, yeah, that makes sense because the other options, you know what? They had our neighborhoods going to Jeffers Pond. I found out last week that this was even under consideration and I'm still talking to moms and dads who are just shocked that this is a consideration. So you're not hearing from our neighborhoods yet. And when you do, like, you're starting to now. I know you're starting to because we've started talking about this on Facebook. But there's gonna be a lot... Just as many people who are upset in Carriage Hill and Nob Creek. They're gonna have the Spring Hill parents and the Northwood Meadows parents. And those are the parents being asked to make the larger sacrifice here. So I thank you for your time and for your consideration and for allowing us for your input.
Emily Gores?
Hi. My name's Emily Gores. I live in the Carriage Hills neighborhood in Prior Lake. Moved there in 2008, before I even had my children, who are currently, will be, in 2021, a kindergartner and a fifth grader. Bought my home with the idea that Prior Lake, and where I did buy it in Prior Lake. Great proximity to 169, where I could get north, where I go to work, so I can pay for my house. And yet have a school very close, a neighborhood school, just like I had growing up. I know that you've heard this from a few of my friends in our neighborhood. But having that neighborhood school is very important to us. And then combining it with the transportation, which I know you guys looked at the transportation from a busing perspective. But I'd implore you to look at what the transportation impacts will be to the community. From us parents who have to take advantage of the excellent before and after-school care programs at Kids Company. Looking at the increased time on the bus, I seriously will need to take a look at if I even need to use Kids Co. anymore. My before or after-school care may go from a really great run program with constructive activities. To a program that is a bus driver, barely monitoring kids on a bus. Not able to offer any constructive activities. No disrespect to the bus drivers, my children love their bus driver. But that's not a really great option in terms of before and after-school daycare. Also, really appreciate that you guys are looking at not changing school times. But something that doesn't change with this is employer start times. I would implore you, I don't know what it's like to live in the neighborhood that's... That would potentially be added to Jeffers in lieu of removing us from Jeffers. But I would implore you all to go during 8 o'clock in the morning, 7:30 in the morning. Drive from one of those neighborhoods to Westwood. Drive from Carriage Hills, my house, half a mile from Jeffers Pond. Pass Jeffers Pond, drive through several neighborhoods throughout Prior Lake. Arrive at Westwood. Drive all the way back, head up to 169, hit that 169 traffic. And then still expect to hit an 8:30 meeting where I'm already late. I would encourage you to try that from both neighborhoods, see what that's like. And then on the reverse, the pickup. I will pass Jeffers Pond four times in one day to take my child to school and pick them up and bring them home from school. Four times. And that's coming out of my neighborhood, waving goodbye to the home neighborhood school that we know and that we love. Just want you guys to think about putting all those factors together and looking at and assessing some other transportation impacts. That aren't necessarily represented on the numbers. And also, know that we as a community have gone through all of the efforts that Scott County's gone through with all the road reconstruction to handle those traffic. High-traffic areas of downtown. Have they really taken into account the additional traffic that will be caused from students and parents that aren't able to stay at home to put their child on the bus? And get home when their child can get off the bus because both parents are working parents. Thank you for your time.
Adam Frankel? And then Jason.
I will try not to recap the things that have already been stated. Obviously, I'm here supporting option C1. The big thing I want to urge the board to do when you're reviewing this is not only to look at options B1 versus option C1. But also look at the existing plan today. The gentleman who was sitting here who had to leave early, he was talking about the long, thin area and the drive that was associated with that. That area today has that same drive. Nothing has changed there. When we talk about the impact on the existing students, which I heard all of you echo, that we want to reduce that as much as possible. I think if you look at the displacement between these two plans. The impact of the displacement with B1 is significantly higher than C1. And I'm sure that you can pull those numbers and put those together very easily. But I think that's really what we need to focus on. While, you know, people talked about the emotion and the numbers, I think all of it's important and all of it needs to be taken into consideration. The displacement is emotional, but it's also numbers. And if you look at it, I think you'll see that that's what's happening.
Jason? Is it done? I can't read the lesson. Jason was in C.
So originally, I was gonna have just a couple of questions, but since this isn't a question period for the board. The statement, I guess, that I have short and sweet. My students are open enrollment students. So I'm not directly affected right now by the boundary options. But I'm a little bit disappointed that open enrollment students haven't really been considered in the numbers. We keep talking about balancing the schools. I know the numbers of open enrollment students are potentially small compared to the neighborhood students. But so far, a lot of the discussions, a lot of the information makes us open enrollment parents feel like we aren't even part of the district. Just would have been nice to be able to see, like, when we look at the percentages of fill in the different schools over the five years. If we at least had an option that showed, based on current open enrollment students that are in these different schools. What the numbers would look like if those students just stayed at their current locations. So, just one piece of information to consider. Not knowing how many students are open enrollment at Jeffers versus all of the other schools. Just would have been good to see if all of the open enrollment parents could keep their students where they currently are. For the different reasons where they are. How that would impact those percentages, even over the long term, knowing that they could then be balanced out by the new students that'll be coming in after the boundaries have been changed. So, short saving. Thank you.
Kira?
Oh, I'll pass. Did you say Kira?
I said Kira.
Yeah, I'll pass.
Okay. Andrea Bernhardt, and then Deana.
Hello, everyone, I'm Andrea Bernhardt and I have a first and fourth grader at Jeffers Pond currently. And I am in favor of C1. The growth that Dennis spoke about for our Carriage Hills, Nob Hill area. Is actually east of our neighborhood and Trillium Cove is kind of the 50-plus development. And there is an easy divider line there that the road actually doesn't go through. If you drove that, you would see that. So that, if that is the why our neighborhood is not wanting to be included in Jeffers. There is an easy boundary change that could make that big, large growth. Go to Westwood and keep our neighborhood in the Jeffers Pond. And then, one more thing, I do work at Jeffers Pond in the preschool program. I see lots of parents here in the preschool program. And that is a huge draw for Jeffers. Jeffers Pond is a very unique building that no other building in Prior Lake, I think, has that outdoor space for that outdoor learning. That all of us have fallen in love with, including myself. My son actually was the first year in Jeffers Pond, the full-day preschool program. I loved it so much that I decided to work there. So I quit my job, you know, the whole 169 commute. And I decided to work there and I love it. And I don't know for sure, but I did hear that the B1 plan removes that preschool program. And puts it in a different school. That's huge in my mind because that environment provides such an amazing program that you can't replicate at other schools. So it would... You know, you can still have that program, it just wouldn't look the same. So I just want you to keep that in mind and thank you so much for letting us speak, I appreciate it.
And Deana?
I am. I knew I was on deck.
Sam went from a deck.
I'm gonna try and keep it brief. I, first of all, want to thank you guys for allowing us to speak as the community, both communities. We obviously are passionate about our kids, right? And they're our kids, we should be, right? When we... When my husband and I both looked at moving from the community and town that we lived in into Prior Lake. We had the same story as Emily. We didn't have kids, we looked around, the school was our number one thing. Not even the house or what it looked like, it was the school, right? We actually went to schools before we moved. And we went over to Jeffers, knowing that's where our kids would go when we had a family, right? That school is amazing, I agree, all the schools in Prior Lake are amazing. But we live, we bike like many people within our community. We bike over to Jeffers Pond. We walk to Jeffers Pond, right? It's right next to us. But the one piece that I would like to make sure that you hone in on, and this is a fact. This is not taking out the feelings. But this is how many displaced students are you looking to move out of Jeffers into another school? Right? If you go away from C1. C1, we know that there are communities that are gonna be able to be... They're gonna be moved either way. C1 provides stability for those kids that aren't going to be moved. So that's what I'd ask. Thank you, guys.
Hello, I'm not bored, we are splitting some time. So we are from the Northwood Meadows neighborhood and we hear all of the same arguments from the Carriage Hills. We hear you, we feel the exact same way. The transportation time, busing time, impact to our children. The difference for us is that we are even further from Westwood. So we would be going past either Five Hocks or going past Jeffers Pond to get to Westwood. So we would be... That wouldn't make... That doesn't make logic sense to us. What we're also feeling like is that there are a lot of people who are unhappy with these two current plans. What we would ask is that you look at other designs that would better fit all of us instead of pitting us against one another. And I don't... Is there anything else you want to add?
I'm in the same group, obviously, as these two here. But what I wanted to say is I hear a lot of conversation from what we think would be all of Prior Lake. But what we're hearing from mostly is one neighborhood and one area and one concern that they have. I get it, I understand, you guys are pulling together and teaming up together to try to help your kids go to the same school. But there's other people here that have had time to kind of get together and talk about this with the short timeline, excuse me, that we had to see the second set of plans. They weren't heard earlier because the first set of plans didn't have the concerns or changes that happened from the A1, B1, to the C1, C3, different changes. So we just want to make sure that the other groups are heard in Prior Lake. It's an open board for everybody in Prior Lake to be able to hear and be heard. Unfortunately, right now, we, about 95% are in one group in one area because they were able to have the time and effort to be able to do that. And all I ask is that if we decide to go with a route like that, we allow everybody in Prior Lake to have the same amount of time to plan. Be able to be heard and say what's on their mind as well. So, thank you.
Is that all your names on this list?
They took my spot, so it's the same.
They took Sam's spot, okay. I got it. Thank you. Amanda? And then Terry Holly, captain.
Hello, my name is Amanda Blatner and I live in the Northwoods Meadows neighborhood. I have two children in the district. I have some of the same concerns that have already been raised, I'll be really quick with them. So, I want a chance to raise the concerns about attendance boundary option C1. Number one, it increases bus times for children living on the west... Number one, it increases bus times for children living on the westernmost side of the district. Why bus kids all the way to Westwood when there are two more western school options available? Number two, increased parent work commutes. Going to Westwood would add significant time to parent commutes due to backtracking for drop-off and pickup and the distance to the 169 corridor. Lastly, option C1 falls short of the desired outcome of more equal percent utilization capacity across elementary schools in the future. Namely, Jeffers Pond increases from 80% current capacity to 81. Not that much of a change. Option B1 does a better job of addressing our neighborhood's concerns, namely, number one, children on the most western side of the district are bussed to the most western schools. Alternatively, children with more easterly addresses attend one of the several more easterly schools. Number two, it is the least amount of impact to parental work commutes by maintaining that proximity to the 169 corridor. And option B1 achieves the desired outcome of a more even school percent capacity utilization outlook. I also just want to raise concerns about the start time differences, too. So right now, my kids are at Five Hocks, they have an 8:30 start time. Either school will be a change for us, it will be a 9:30 a.m. start time. My childcare costs are going to double because right now I can get my kids on the bus and still make it to work. That option with this change is not available. So my childcare costs are basically going to double with either option you make. These are the type of impacts that your decision is going to have on families. So I would like you to please consider option B1. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Holly, and Drew's going to speak on my behalf, but I will.
Yeah, I'm Drew Birch, I live in Carriage Hills, I'm in support of C1. I have twin first graders, a three-year-old and a nine-month-old. So this like impacts me for 10 years, and I'm speaking on behalf of a bunch of families that are really passionate about this, too. Everything everybody said today is what got my attention in this. But I'm a pretty pragmatic person, and I'll take my lumps if I have to take them, if it's in the better interest of the community. But as I did my homework today and looked at this proposal, it really came down to me, and I'm trying to speak to you all as decision-makers here on the not-house, right? So the unacceptable means and create unreasonable inequities. And I think as I was hearing the presentation earlier, it wasn't the most important factor, but if you look at option B1, it really slants Jeffers Pond as almost an elitist school, right? So 87% white, 3.9% reduced lunch, and 9.5% special ed. And if you go to option C3, it lowers the percentage of white students in the school, it increases the amount of reduced lunches to 6%, and then special education moves up to 11.7%. It balances them out a lot better than the B1 option. So I think that's a huge thing you guys should take into consideration, take all the feels out of it, right? But that's, I think we should try to balance these schools out as best as we can. So, and all the other stuff everybody said today. Thanks.
Wendy Horton?
Hi, my name is Wendy Horton, and I live in the Carriage Hills neighborhood. Unlike a lot of people, we moved just into the Carriage Hills neighborhood just 14 months ago. And the number-one reason we moved into that neighborhood was my kids and I were escaping an abusive family situation, and we had to leave our home. We chose a school, I chose a school for my family and for my three children, who all attended, one who just attended Jeffers Pond and is now at Twin Oaks, and my other two who are currently at Jeffers Pond. And I chose that school in conjunction with their therapist to find an outdoor school that kept them out of private school and private school costs that helped them be in a healthy environment that included outdoor education. So that for me is a huge, I know makes me a very personal, unique situation, but I do share it because I think Jeffers Pond is a very unique school. And I think it offers some unique situations for unique kids. And my kids are part of those kids, but a big part of their community also is the neighborhood they live in, the houses they back up to, their friends that they have met there who have become their safe space. And for me, that is my number-one priority. I'm a single, full custody mom. I work downtown Minneapolis. I literally gauge my day minute to minute from my commute to my home, to feeding my family, and I do it all by myself. And so in doing so, I don't ask for any pity, but I do just plan it out very, very specifically so I can get them exactly what they need. I stayed home with my kids for five years to ensure that they were in their very best place, in a mentally and physical place. And I returned to work a year ago, and I chose our home literally because I plan our day out minute to minute. I wake up at 4:30 each morning so that I can get them to school on time, that I can get them their healthy meals, all those things, and set them up for the very best success, then go carry out my workday from my home, and then come home and put them in the best possible situation for their night, for their sleep situation, for their activities, all those great things that kids should always experience in a safe environment. I think Prairie Lake is amazing. I handpicked this community to move here, and I love our neighborhood. The support I get from my neighborhood, being a single mom, I depend on many people in these rooms to make sure that my kids are safe, sometimes fed and sometimes put to bed at a reasonable time, depending on what my schedule looks like. And so it's just imperative to me to understand the impact of it has on families. I know it doesn't impact me alone, certainly, but I do know that I took a whole day off two weeks ago just to run the route that it takes to go to Westwood and what that looks for a morning commute, when I drop my kids off at KidsCo in the morning and in the evening. And it added 50 minutes per day to my commute. For kids who only have one healthy parent, that's a big impact of what that takes out of our family time and the impact that it takes to, you know, there's three of them and only one of me, so I always feel pretty challenged for my time in getting them what they need, but that 50 minutes is drastically, would drastically impact our day. And I really don't want that time to be in the car. I'd love to be outside with them. I'd love to be doing things that kids do, and I don't think a lot of those things and a lot of those healthy relationships necessarily happen in the car. It certainly wouldn't be my first choice. I think the biggest thing that drives all of that for me is a neighborhood school. I live .28 miles from Jeffers Pond. In rain or shine, seven o'clock in the morning, you'll see us walking in all our snow gear down to Jeffers Pond and trudging back. Any of those things, that's part of their healthy activity and part of their, you know, being aware and included in their surroundings. So I just think that's a really big piece of it. I think there's a lot of reasons that, looking at this elementary school, and what is unique to Jeffers Pond is the only elementary school west of the lake. I think that creates a lot of, you know, challenges, and I do not envy your positions you're sitting in right now, but I do think that it does create some unique situations. But I think that maintaining a neighborhood school is absolutely the healthiest thing for kids in these neighborhoods and families in their neighborhoods. And I thank you for your time and your effort and the tough decision ahead of you.
Roberta? Roberta?
I'm back there.
After Roberta.
Amy Cotton.
Hello, everybody. I, of course, also am in support of yellow sticker C1. And I've lived in Carriage Hills for probably four years now. And again, like everybody, bought my house there specifically because the real estate ad said, "close to local schools," right? I mean, so everybody who bought houses there, that was a big factor for us. And to take that away, I think changes more than just what teacher they have for fourth grade or something like that. It's changing the whole way our neighborhood has developed. It's full of kids. Why? Because everybody wants to live right by the school. That's why we all moved there. And so you're changing more than just what homeschool our children have. It's changing our whole neighborhood, and so that's really important, I think, to acknowledge. The other thing I wanted to comment on was school bus route times. And partly it's because I have a son who went to Westwood from Carriage Hills because he was in the Sage program, fantastic program, and that worked for him. And so I can tell you specifically the difference in the bus times. It's not just saying, "what's the longest bus time?" Well, it's less than 30 minutes. Okay, well, that's within the allowable. My son who goes to Jeffers Pond has an eight-minute bus time. My son who went to Westwood from the same house had like a 25-minute bus time. So you're talking about, you know, extensive change to 400 households. So I think that instead of just looking at what's the longest it's going to be, I think you should be looking at what are the biggest deltas we're going to be seeing for kids? What is the total average that you're seeing for kids? Because if you have one student with a 30-minute bus ride and 400 students with an eight-minute bus ride, that's different than, you know, 400 students with a 30-minute bus ride. So I think, look at how you're changing what these kids are experiencing every day, more so than just what are the extremes on one end or the other. What else did I have on my list of notes? I think that's, everybody else has kind of said everything else that I had on my long list here, but just keep in mind that Jeffers Pond, you know, we keep talking, oh, it's .2, . whatever. We share a stoplight, okay? I mean, that's what we should, we share a stoplight with the school. So you couldn't be closer if you lived in a tent in the parking lot, okay? So let's just keep that in mind. I mean, it's not just this distance or that distance or MapQuest or Google Maps or something. It's a stoplight, so.
Amy? Yeah, that's me. Hi. I'm Amy Cotton. I actually, my kids go to Redtail right now. So we represent one of the 41% that will be leaving Redtail under these options that are being proposed. So I'm actually standing here probably in a minority. I'm on the east side, and basically, I'm not in support of either option. So I've sent you an email, you've seen probably, hopefully you've seen the income inequality that I've been pointing out. Based on the two scenarios remaining, the new elementary will be almost identical to what Greenwood is today. And for people who aren't aware, it's around 90,000, 91,000. And it's basically under that new elementary, it'll be 16% lower than the average household income and 27% lower than the neighboring Redtail. And so I have an issue with that, and that's not okay. And so Dennis, when he was sitting here tonight, actually said something quite interesting to me, or to us, I should say, but he stated that the team looked at the building percent capacity and made sure it wouldn't create any new inequalities. And I'm like, that sounds wrong to me. Why are we okay with letting it be, continuing to be an inequality when this is our time to try and draw the lines with the white way and make sure that it's taken care of? So I guess, you know, I disagree with this, and I hope others would, too. I just ask that you fix that, and just look at all options. Thank you very much.
Erin? Karen? Hanky?
I'm good. I think everybody's covered.
And Jen? I can't read her last name, Jen.
Good luck with that one. Oh, Hanky. Hi, everyone. I am representing Northwoods. Like many people that have echoed this, we just learned about this about a week ago. So I'm a little bit envious of all the yellow stickers out there because I would love to have the time to rally as much. But the main points I wanted to leave was the biggest heartache that we have in my neighborhood and our community is we would have to drive past two schools that are a shorter mileage and distance. We had experienced going to Westwood last summer with the Kids Company program. It did double our commute time. It is not on our way to work or in on our drive time around the lake. It is something I just want to emphasize. It is not convenient for us with the C1 proposal. It does add drive time. I am in favor of staying within my community, and when I say community, I say Five Hocks. I see Mr. Bell back there, he's awesome. I would love to stay with the Five Hocks school or Jeffers Pond. My daughter did attend the pre-K program there, and I fell in love with those people in this neighborhood as well, too. You are my community, I would like to stay there. Westwood is on the other side of a very busy highway. It's not convenient for my neighborhood, and we would just like you to consider possible other designs or taking in our complaints as well because we're echoing very similar messages. So thank you for your time.
Is there anyone in the audience that has something else they would like to contribute that doesn't have your name on this list?
So our neighborhood has not been.
Could you tell me your name, please?
Yeah, my name's Joe Stamford. Sorry. So like I said, my name's Joe Stamford. I live in the Glenwater neighborhood, which is just south of 154th. So if you don't look very hard at either option, you'd think that we're not affected. By C1, we are affected. The Jeffers Pond boundary is basically unchanged on C1, right? Except for my neighborhood. That just doesn't make sense to me. Why would you keep the boundary the same except for one small neighborhood? If you break down the numbers, it comes out to, it says that there's 70 kids in our neighborhood. I don't get where that comes from. Our neighborhood's definitely not that large, so I kind of question the numbers that go into breaking that off. But I just want to say, I don't understand, I don't really support either option as they currently stand. I don't understand why you would break up just a small portion of one school. That's it.
So I'm Krista Kretman, and I have an awesome call going on, and I want to explain or just share my story and how we kind of came to Jeffers Pond. So, lived in Woodbury and absolutely hated it. I grew up in Minnetaka, grew up with lakes and trees and elevation, and hated Woodbury so much that needed to be closer to Minnetaka without being in Minnetaka. And fell in love with Prairie Lake, was building a house over in the Five Hocks School District. My daughter at the time, when we moved to Prairie Lake, was 17 months old. I called Jeffers Pond to open enroll her at 17 months and asking what it took to get there because we would drive by the school all the time. Luckily, some things happened and ended up canceling on that house and building a house right behind Jeffers Pond, which isn't, I'm not affected by this, but now I've watched my second grader who has now developed these friendships, and all of her friends are across 21. And I'm sad to have that conversation with her, so as a parent, it makes me nervous what that's going to look like when she's in fourth or fifth grade. So I am in favor of C1 and keeping my school community intact. I mean, I ran a carnival and had some of my best friends from across the street, and just the sense of community there is amazing, and I'm scared to see what that looks like. So I want you to know that like 17 months of age, I was trying to enroll, open enroll my daughter at that school. So I think a lot of people look at that. So that's my story, is that I'm happy the way it worked out because it's where I wanted my daughter to go, and now I have another daughter who is six weeks old. So, yeah, just know that people, all these people have these stories. You know, they were talking about going to sports. Stacy, we, I'm moving, I'm getting Izzy off out of school at 4:00, and I've got to get to her to soccer by 4:45 at the Savage Sports Dome. I mean, we're, I'm shoving the granola bar in her and getting her to soccer. And I'm doing that alone right now because my husband's working in Minneapolis. So going across the lake, I had to do that Westwood KidsCo thing, and KidsCo isn't opening any earlier to accommodate for that. So it sucks for all of us and just the friendships and so forth. So you've heard it all. And so, yeah, mine is an emotional piece, but it's an amazing piece of property there. So, yeah.
My name's Steve Zedina. I'm supporting C1, but I don't have my badge. But I want to talk about capacity real quick because our school is being the most, you know, we have Veerling's Land, we have Trillium over by us, but we're still going down the most in our capacity. We have 74% at the end of 2024. So we've got the most room to grow with the most opportunity for people moving in. So that was my only thing I wanted to share.
I know I already had time, but I had one other thing. Just for transparency, is there a way to get the existing boundary and the B1 and C1 all put on one map so that we can see like really clearly what's changing? Because they have these three different things, and you're kind of hunting around, and I think it would make it a lot easier for people to understand. At least you put the existing behind each of the options. So that was the other thing I wanted to ask. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I won't go through all of your names.
I'm Mandy Kapnick. I just had two quick things. One is a personal story. I went to 11 schools growing up, and I was determined my daughter wouldn't do that. So we moved here last year to go to Jeffers Pond. She started, she's doing wonderfully, and that was like my one, like, I'm not going to do that. And then here we are, looking at moving schools. And then here we are, looking at moving schools right after first grade. Already failed that one. You know, it was like, this was the thing I wasn't going to do. So that's, again, a personal impact, but a lot of people do move for schools. Our real estate, we moved one year ago so our daughter could go to kindergarten through fifth grade in the same place. One year ago, I could pull up our old listing. It does say Jeffers Pond all over it because that's what my search for a home was based exclusively on school districts. My Realtor was like, "Wait, which cities do you want?" I was like, "No, these are the schools I want." Set up my listing like this. So a ton of that went into that. And to already be looking at that going to waste is really disappointing. Secondly, I just want to say that the process itself, I find it really disappointing that it wasn't, that there were never numbers of how many displaced families for all the options that ever came across. Why that wasn't a consideration is kind of crazy to me. Someone came up and talked about her psychologist husband, like, the idea... Like I said, I went to 11 schools. It doesn't number on you. The idea that those numbers aren't easily accessible to us to consider is crazy, that we're considering all of this without saying, "Who are these real people?" Not percentages of capacities and number of minutes, but who are these people and how many of them are there who really are going to have to be moved? So I'm disappointed that we didn't have that information or that you guys didn't have that information to consider throughout this process as well. And there's another one on the way, so I'll blame the tears on that.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Well, the board has heard everything you've had to say. Well, I'm guessing that we'll have more questions for the administration and the input and design team. And we will have another work session, as I said, on May 6th before our board meeting. And that work session will start at 5:30 on May 6th. Again, thank you all for coming. Thank you for supporting your children. It's a good feeling that you're all here to report.
Thank you all. Come back again.